Approve the meeting agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Uh, and moving on to the approval of the committee minutes. Meeting minutes, um, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. On to old business. No. Uh. Sorry. Um, let's see. Proposed new policy, employee code of conduct. Let's go ahead and jump right in. So, um, we have run it through, um, our lawyer, we've run it with Lisa, we've run it with technology, we've run it through HR. Um, so everyone's had a chance to review this and now it's ours too. Um, Lisa has just forwarded to us today, um, her final proposal and she's been in contact with Jennifer Parrish as well. So that we can, um, go ahead and, uh, approve this or and discuss it. So, do I do a motion first to approve and then we discuss?
Yes, typically, yeah.
Yes.
Well, either that or I would suggest if Lisa has any just overall or broad comments, why don't she go ahead and just present that? And then we can make sure we're ready to move it forward. How about that? I don't know if Lisa has any just broad comments.
Uh, sure. Um, so Jennifer and I spoke, um, this morning and primarily reviewed the document from the Policy Review Committee, um, that Jay Cook headed up. Um, and, and basically incorporated most of the recommendations from that committee. Um, one of the things that Jennifer wanted to make sure was that the language that we used in here with regard to, um, use of employee of a school division resources was consistent with the acceptable use, uh, policy. So you'll find that information on page, uh, one. One of the big areas was to make sure that there were certain carve-outs in terms of exceptions. Uh, one of the things that the committee, uh, pointed out was that, um, employees do, do use things like the wifi that is SCPS to perhaps check, uh, personal email. And there may be the occasional, uh, checking and, um, use of personal email on SCPS-owned property. Um, so that carve-out is in here. One of the most significant, um, things that Jennifer and I discussed is on, uh, page four of the, um, revised document. And that has to do with communicating using cell phones or social media applications. So we, uh, talked a lot about the fact that employees and students aren't one-dimensional. Meaning that they're just not employees and just not, uh, students. So an example would be, I'll just use a church youth group. So, um, the leader of the church youth group may be a Stafford County employee. Students who are in that church youth group could be Stafford County students. But the way that that youth group communicates is via social media. Um, and, and so there had to be a carve-out for, uh, that. Um, the same would be for like travel, um, athletic clubs. The, the coach could be a Stafford County employee and some of the players could be Stafford County students. And the way that they communicate is texting or Facebook or Instagram or whatever. So there had to be some type of acknowledgement that employees and students aren't one-dimensional. That they have lives outside of work and lives outside of just being a student. So that was one of the, uh, things that we talked about that was, that was fairly significant and I wanted to point that out. And that is reflected, like I said, on page four, if you look at, um, C and D, especially, I'm sorry, D and E.
Yeah.
Because if-
The new, the new D and E.
Yes, I'm sorry, the new D and E.
Okay. Cause I'm, cause I'm looking at the red line.
Um, yes. So that's why Jennifer put those comments in there so that you could, uh, see what the thinking was behind it. Because I did bring that point up because I, I, I know that for instance, my church youth group, um, communicates via Facebook. And our field hockey club, the coach is a Stafford County teacher.
Is, is there, and I, I haven't had a chance to look at this, Lisa, I'm sorry, um, since these, these notations were made. I've been at work all day. Um, is, is there something in here that, that, you know, let's talk about the elephant in the room. The reason that we, we wanted to do this was to, um, mitigate any inappropriateness. So is there, is there a bullet here that kind of addresses?
Yes.
The elephant.
Right, I, I do understand that and we talked about that as, uh, well. And, um, that is in, at the bottom of page three, at least that's the way my printer printed it out. It's, um, section eight A. Employees may use electronic communications with students using school-approved devices and on school platforms only for legitimate purposes. So that's in A. Um, and then also in the new D, it talks about employees shall not communicate with students using cell phones or social media unless such communications are for the purposes set forth in paragraph A, which means legitimate purposes. So Jennifer and I talked about that and thought that between A and D that covered that. But also to carve out the exceptions for the church group, the, you know, athletic club, the theater club. That's outside of school and work.
I, I, with your examples and everything, that's good.
Yeah.
That's great.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's the part that I was gonna worry about as well.
Yeah, so, um, definitely she wanted to make sure that your concerns were addressed and they're addressed in two places.
Okay.
Lisa, this is Holly. I, I really appreciate the work that you and Jennifer have done on this. I just, I feel like in some sense we are trying to get ahead of this social media communication stuff. And I, I know you and I, I believe have spoken, you know, our children and since Lisa, yours and our, mine are about the same, you know, age. They've almost never grown up, or at least in their, you know, semi, you know, teen and early adult years without communicating through a device. And that is gonna be the experience of our newest teachers. And I just don't want any of them to get in trouble for something that they really don't know. I, I, I know that sounds crazy, but it's for everybody's protection. And I'm trying to also say, you know, the employees shouldn't communicate with the students that way. But we also, you know, can, can be protecting them from, you know, unwanted. Look, you know, kids go out, try and find their social media pages, all that kind of stuff. I know it happens. I mean, I'm not, not completely naive, even though my kids probably think I am. But, you know, I wanna protect them as well, cause they too should be able to have a life. So, anyway, thank you for the work.
Sure, I totally agree with that. And I'll have, I see Patrick is on here. And I know that, you know, during the, um, NTI, that, that was the whole social media and texting and communications with students. Um, is, is, uh, something that is covered. I think that that can be bolstered now by having this employee code of conduct. And I'll let Patrick, uh, weigh in on that as well.
Sure, Dean, everybody. Uh, plans for New Teacher Institute this year are still ongoing as we're trying to figure out what, uh, what setting and environment New Teacher Institute might look like. Uh, obviously, uh, we've been, uh, lucky to have a partnership with SEA for the last number of years. For them to come in and help us lead a social media session, um, that we, we work with them on in advance. We found that they have been very helpful messengers on the importance of professionalism in the social media setting from both the perspective of, uh, a student focus and also to help employees avoid getting themselves into trouble as well. Uh, inadvertently, as Lisa referred to. And, uh, Ms. Hazard, I think that the concern that you raise is very well heard in this instance. That in this environment where people are going to be doing, uh, more, uh, communication through those devices, that having some guardrails set up is helpful.
And I think that's the perfect word, guardrails. Um, you know, the banks on the, banks on the river, the, banks on the riverbank, okay, that's not exactly the phrase. But it is just trying to say, you know, there are some parameters. And, you know, do I think we're gonna come down, you know, I, I also wanna make sure that Patrick and for Lisa, for anything going forward, when we have something that is definitely something that's a threat to a fellow member, you know, fellow employee or to a student, that we have the right tools to handle that. Not saying, of course, due process, you all know, I, I believe. But I also don't want us to feel like if there is something that we have the adequate ability to say, this is what Stafford County Public Schools stands for and these are our standards. And they are part of being an, an employee. And I think that's important. We have them for our students, for ourselves. And anyway, I, I hope it's actually helpful long-term for everybody that they feel safe, to be honest.
I, I would agree. I, I just think that it's, um, it's, especially getting this completed before the New Teacher Institute. It's kinda nice when you have something said to you in a forum, but then to have it supported with writing to where even some of our, you know, professionals that have been with us for the, some time, um, feel like, you know, everybody's abiding by, we're working with, you know, rules. And again, like Holly said, you know, even this generation of teachers, new teachers coming in, this is, you know, the social media and immediate connection anytime they want. Um, it's just something that they're comfortable with. And so to have something that, you know, keeps the, the professionalism where we want it, I would say is something I think we're concerned about.
If you need to, I will make the motion to approve the, um, proposed standards of professional conduct for employees as, um, submitted to us today with the comments, um, incorporated today.
For counsel.
You would agree?
With, with the, with the, um, with the comments from counsel, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, then, then you've got my second.
Okay. So, um, Dr. Kizner, did you have, well, okay, we have a first and a second. Any discussion? Dr. Kizner, did you wanna add anything?
No, I, I, well, I always love when somebody says no and then they add things, so, um. Yeah, I, I do appreciate that there's a recognition that, um, uh, the term relevancy and applicable to the teaching and learning environment. Um, the, the, you know, there could be times, again, as you guys already gave examples, where contacting a student, um, especially in a remote learning world we are, through, um, through technology, different than we did just a couple of years ago, even last year, um, might occur. Um, what I think we're really reminding all of us, and, and this policy, I think everyone has to remember, is for all of us. You know, it's, it's staff, it's the superintendent, everyone. Um, is that, uh, your, your communications to students as an employee of Stafford County School has to be, um, I'll just use the term work-related. Um, and, and when it's not work-related, um, uh, that's when I think the guardrails, um, discussion has to happen.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
You wanna call the question? Or are we, are we done?
I think we are. Um, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, hearing none. Let's, um, we'll have that, uh, I guess available to, and ready to roll out with, um, New Teacher Institute.
Actually, we'll have it, um, sorry, we'll have it ready to be on the agenda for next Tuesday night.
Oh, sorry, sorry, you're right.
I have a quick question for ya. Um, are, are you guys going to, uh, want this as a policy of regulation?
No.
What is your recommendation?
What is your recommendation?
It's that, is that these are standards. I don't think it needs to be a school board policy. Would you agree, Dr. Kizner?
Yeah, well, I was gonna say, I might've, I might've suggested otherwise. I was thinking policy or, well, I was thinking not a regulation. Um, only because the superintendent is, by their school board policy, the superintendent creates regulations. School board creates policies. So, um, you know, I, I don't really see a problem not being a formal policy, but I'll, I'll leave it up to the three board members. What, what was the third option you gave us, Lisa?
It was, it was just that they're, they're, um, standards. Um, so, so you can have guidelines and standards that are neither a policy-
Okay, alright.
Or, or a reg. It just depends upon how the, how the school board wants to do it. So you're, so what you do is you think about how you wanna amend and possible updates and changes in the future. Our, our current policies, even though they're kind of suspended, talks about if, if this policies, it has to go through two board meetings. So if there's some type of change that needs to, to occur, it could be, um, quite a process to, to, um, update it. So I just leave that up to you guys, but those are options.
My, my, my comment here on this one would be that technology is changing so quickly that I think that we, we would need to, you know, have a tickler system that reminds us every two years maybe to, to look at it and make sure that the, that the guidelines, policy, guardrails, whatever you wanna call it, um, is in line with, with what we're utilizing as technology. You follow me?
Sorry, I got briefly disconnected.
But can I just follow on what Irene said? I, um, Lisa, when we bring the student code of conduct under, I don't wanna say under normal circumstances, without a lot of changes. You know, like our, you know, every year we, we bring that. That's not considered, that is not a codified policy in our policy manual. Or at least that's my understanding.
So, so the student code of conduct by, uh, state law is required to be approved by the school board. So we have to have it approved by the school board and there is a policy and a regulation for the, um, student code of conduct. But that's a little bit different because it is required by state law to be approved by the board.
I was just trying to link it that same way of, you know, it's something we review and approve, um.
I mean, maybe we make the recommendation, we'll see what the will of the board is, we make the recommendation. Um, it's gonna be up to future boards to decide how often they wanna update it. And again, you know, technology's changing and the way we're, we're teaching and learning is changing. So I think it, I think it needs to have an eye over it every now and then, how we implement that, I, I, I don't know.
So, uh, what our recommendation would be then to bring it forward and have, uh, and to say two years and then let's see what the discussion or will of the board is.
The, the school systems that we looked a couple of months ago as models, were they school board policies or were they something different?
Prince William County had it as a policy.
I would say let's bring it as a policy.
Yeah.
We can still get it approved if there's not major changes at the July meeting. I know that's a little close, Patrick, for you, but you'll at least have sort of an idea, hopefully by that time of what we will be approving, that you'll know sort of the guardrails, at least of what's gonna be in there. Um.
Well, you could actually get it, you could get it approved in a June, the second June meeting.
Yeah.
The June 26th meeting.
You have two, you have two meetings in June, so even if there's, based on next Tuesday's discussion, if there's change of any sort, we'll bring it back to the board, uh, two weeks later. I mean, yeah, you're right, you could do it in July, but you, you are, you are on a time sequence to get it completed by June.
Yeah.
It gives us one extra meeting, is what I'm kinda saying, is to bring it this time on Tuesday. If we don't get it done on the 26th, we have July, which still should fall-
Fourteenth, is it? Something like that?
Um, maybe the 21st, that's the week after that.
Yeah.
Oh, that'll be awfully close.
Twenty first, twenty first would be very close to NTI.
We're gonna try and convince others to get four votes, so don't, I, you know, to see if this is something. I mean, if it's not the will of the board, then it won't be. But I think that there is a lot of important stuff in here, um, that should be covered. So I think we bring it Tuesday and, you know, our job is to bring the best recommendation on something we believe that the school board needs to address. That is what our job is and that is what we're going to do on Tuesday.
So, so what I'll do is I will put it in the, uh, format for it to be a policy and assign it a tentative number. And then I guess make sure that all of you guys have it and Missy has it.
Okay.
Okay?
And another advantage for having it as a policy, as somebody, Irene, and I, I think all of you are saying the same thing. As it, as a review every couple of years, as we noticed with the student code of conduct, when the general assembly takes action, if there's new legal references we have to use, it's easier to have it as a policy and not lose sight of it.
Agreed.
Yeah. I would agree. Okay, so that's what we'll do, is we'll bring it before the board of policy with, um, uh, maybe an every-two-year review with the understanding that if things come up and that requires us to look at it, the government committee can take that on. Sounds good.
Sounds good to me.
Alright. So, moving on to, um, the school board retreat. I think now is a really great time for us to get art professional development on. Um, just as a board, not as board members individually, but as a board. Um, we had three options. One, I really am not impressed with because, um, the VSBA and it is, uh, remote only. The second and the third, one is, um, Kevin Kasner. He's here in Virginia, um, and he has, uh, a retreat. They're both similar in models as far as the compass. But, uh, Kevin's is $3,500 plus, um, travel, yes, expenses. But he is, is gonna do the interview, he's going to, uh, a, a pre-interview. So he will contact board member by phone, speak to them and, um, you know, just, we'll all get the same general questions. And then we meet on that Friday. Um, he'll discuss with us a little bit about what he's kind of discovered. There's not gonna be like hidden secrets, concealed anything. Um, and then he intends to go into working through scenarios. We break into small groups and we work through scenarios. And then we come together and we discuss them. Um, and then he will have an after action, uh, plan where he said, you know, here's some things that I amend. But he'll also just, you know, kind of go through it with us there as well. Um, the second person is someone that some of the board members are familiar with, Doug Eadie. Um, he is currently in Florida. Um, he is offering to come and, uh, he sent an email to all of you, um, about his action plan. But he's very similar to Kevin in that he have a, the one-hour interviews with one-on-one, each of us. Um, then he work, breaks it out into, um, different work sessions, uh, to go over, again, scenarios. But also, if this, um, it, well, it's mostly done through scenarios, but there's opportunity for, I guess, full-board discussions. Um, and some things that, you know, we are in mind, help us break into some, maybe some goal thoughts for, uh, coming into the school year, which of course is all gonna be helpful as we, as a board have to go forward governing. Um, you know, we don't know what it's all gonna look like or how it's gonna work at this time. But still, we have to be able to say what we want as a board and how we want to function as a group and function with Dr. Kizner. Um, and of course, Dr. Kizner, you are so invited to all of this with us, please. And, um, so he gave us different options. Um, one was a ninety-minute, uh, webinar. Um, which I kinda think is similar to the one that I sent to you all. I sent the, um, the PowerPoint presentation. Um, the, the, the second was a three-hour educational video webinar. And then the third was an in-person. I'm much more into the in-person. I feel like having someone in the room with us and us working together, whether we physically distance ourselves or mask ourselves or whatever we have to do. Um, I, I think is a, is a much better plan. Um, my preference, um, I've spoken to both of them and my preference is, um, working with Doug Eadie. I enjoy his book, I've enjoyed his webinar. And of course, I did talk to him too. Um, but I'd like to hear from the board, uh, from the committee on, um, some of your thoughts.
We've seen a couple of them. I'm up for anything, so it doesn't really matter to me.
I think, you know, they're, I think they're both strong. But, you know, Susan, I also wanna go with sort of what your gut reaction is. I have been impressed with Doug's book. I think that's kind of been a thing that people can look at ahead of time and, you know, kinda get the sense, you know, I'm, I, both would be fine. I think we're picking, the nice thing is, I think for us, it's between Kevin and Doug, uh, Kevin Kasner and Doug Eadie, two good choices. So to me, we don't really make a bad choice. We're trying to, we're gonna pick the one that for some reason just strikes us as maybe a little better. And it seems like your sense is, I did enjoy that book. It might be great for people to have a takeaway, to have the book either before or after. So I am willing to kinda go with sort of, um, Doug Eadie as well.
Okay. So how do I do this with the full board? Do I just present the two options? Do I present the one option if they ask, I don't know what my role on that part would be?
Here's how it was handled in the past. In the past, the chair and vice-chair actually selected and found the, um, facilitator. And the main part was coming up with the date and saying to people, saying to the board, everybody has agreed that we are going to get together for board dynamics, I don't know, fill in the blank, on this date. Um, I think we will talk through, and I don't think we have to deal with it tonight. I don't wanna take up everybody's time to try and identify the place. We can reach out to people. As things are beginning to open, we may have more options. Just right now, everybody's sort of in, you know, opening mode. And so we have a little bit of time, not a lot, but a little bit. Um, and we just say, we're looking forward to our board retreat with, you know, fill in the blank on, on this date. We, more details on exactly the, the, the timing, but I really am appreciative that all board members have blocked off the date of blah to do it. And boom, don't, I wouldn't berate it. I, I mean, I wouldn't make it longer, give a little snapshot. And then, um, I would like to ask if Missy could, um, purchase one of his books or, um, for every board member and maybe senior staff, whatever. Cause I think that's a night, you know, a great gesture that gets everybody excited about it, you know, ahead of time. If, if not, I can order it on Amazon and have it here in a couple of days.
I already did.
So, you know, but what I'm saying, and then everybody has that and we can kinda start to get excited for it. That's just sort of my approach, but, you know.
So we're, we're looking again at, um, June 20th, right? I was just trying to make sure I got that locked in.
That seemed to be the, um, the one date that worked best for most.
So then I guess I would actually have Missy go ahead and after this, send, send that out, cause it did seem like there was a commitment to that. Have people lock down that, that day. And, um, we can, you know, create kind of a neat invitation. We can come up with something kinda creative for everybody and, you know, but I'd make it a two-sentence, you know, um. here it is, here's what we've decided on, and we're excited. And like I said, if we need to, I'll order the books and we can have them by Tuesday and have everybody have one.
Okay, that sounds good. And then he wants to get on a call with you and me and Dr. Kizner
Okay.
to just make sure that his ideas align with our ideas on what we want to do. I mean, he obviously has done this so many times, it down, but he doesn't want to, you know, doesn't want to be carbon copy. We wanted, you know, customized for our needs.
I think that sounds great. Why don't after, I think, Missy and Chris or Dr. Kizner, you all can deal with the, you know, securing him with the contract and signing that, you know, I know you all know how to do that, whoever has to sign that. And then we move forward and then, you know, find out his best availability and, you know, we'll go from there. But I'm excited that we've got this on there. I think it's a great opportunity for, for the board.
I'm excited too.
Yeah, I do, I do want to thank you guys. You know, a couple of months ago, you spoke about it. And, and even with the, with the unfortunate disruption, you guys never lost target of it. So thank you.
Sure.
Well, we hope you're going to be excited. I think it's a great thing for all of us, and I, I'm just looking forward to it. And, you know, we're all going to learn, we're, we're going to model lifelong learning.
Yes.
There it is. All right. So, okay. Going to new business, the reactivation of the Joint Schools Working Committee. I know this is something that I'm definitely interested in working in because I've, I've enjoyed my conversations with them and, and following along through this process, as strange as it is, especially now with COVID. But Holly, do you want to hit us up on what you have for that?
Really not too much more. It sounds like that the Board of Supervisors is on board, or at least they're, they're going to try to be. Having had a conversation with Dr. Kizner about possible unfunded mandates and things like that coming down the pike, I believe that we need a fab that is on top of the financial part, and we also will need the secondary part of here's the impact on our kids part, which is, which is how I think the joint schools, there's a financial aspect, but we're trying not to focus that that's it. It's more information. This is what, how this impacts our children. So I think that that's really important. And Susan, I will put you down as someone interested in that committee, and we can, you know, talk more about that as well.
Yeah. But I, I'm glad to hear that they're interested in going forward with that.
Dr. Kizner, you may have more to add as well on, on, but I think that that committee can be crafted in a great way to open dialogue and try not to have a lot of surprises, even though we may getting, be getting a lot of surprises throughout the next.
Yeah. Yeah, I think this will be really good also. These are two positive steps.
Okay, so do we need to be involved? Well, I'm sure this will come after the committees are selected, putting it, or maybe there's already one in place with a charter with bylaws and all of that? Is that already in place or something that will have to be worked on?
I think there was an old charter, but here's the thing, it is a joint committee. I'm not going to get too far ahead. If we can start off with making sure we have open dialogue, if people want to spend a lot of the time on the, the charter and stuff, there may be. But I don't think we come for the first meeting saying, let's talk about a charter. I think there were in the past, some guardrails kind of put up for that committee. I will go through the myriad of paper that I have and search, and I may have Missy do the same thing on the computer, because I thought there were some guidelines at one point for that committee. So we'll see what we have, but to me, the focus, let's just get talking and we can, depending on who's on that committee, we won't let it get way off the rails. But I also don't want to come and say, well, let's sit down and just talk about the charter. Let's talk about schools and then how we want to go forward. I think that'll be good.
Ms. Hazard, I can say, about a year ago, I was asked to look into that charter. And I did get in touch with the, with my counterpart across the street, and we discovered that one was drafted by that committee years ago, like back in 2013, I think it was, but it was never actually approved or adopted by the two boards. So left it, was left in a draft status.
If you could forward that to, to myself, I may share that with Ms. Bonkey.
Absolutely, sure.
Okay. All right. So I think we've covered everything that we need to cover in our meeting tonight. Is there anything else anybody can think of or?
No, Susan, I just want to say to you, thank you for taking on this committee. I think there's a lot of strong things coming out of it, and I believe as we go into the fall, the groundwork that we're laying right now, we'll, we will see the benefits. So thank you.
Sure, I'm excited. I'm excited. Irene taught me about it. So I was, I appreciated learning about this and now being able to participate in it. So thank you. So, all right. Well, then I'm just going to go ahead and say our meeting is adjourned. And we'll meet again after the board meeting. We'll set another one. So we can go over any compromises or changes that we need to, if, or if we need to, for the proposed policy. Go ahead.
No, I was going to say thank you, but I, I'll wait till you say goodbye.
All right. Okay, so this meeting is adjourned.